Thanks, thanks y'all. Thanks.
Hey, good afternoon and welcome to our first meeting of June. Appreciate the people who are with us in our council chambers and also those of you watching us on Electric City Television. The invocation tonight will be given by Councilmember Don Chapman in respect to the flag, so we get led by Councilmember Buck Roberts. Please rise.
Before the prayer, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence. Since our last council meeting, the city of Anderson lost a great community leader. May we pause for a moment in silence for the passing of Cord Seabrook. He will forever be grateful for the lives he touched and the impact of his legacy that he leaves on this community. Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, as we gather here tonight for our first meeting of June, we give thanks for the many blessings that you show us each and every day and ask that you continue to watch over us and guide us. As with this and all times, we give thanks for the men and women both far and near who protect us and our freedoms so that we are able to gather here tonight. We pray and give thanks for our firefighters and our police officers as they continue to serve our community and keep us safe. We pray for their safety. We pray for all of our city employees, this administration, and this council. May all we say and do be in the best interest of our citizens, our city, but most of all be pleasing in your eyes. Amen.
Now, please, ladies and to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get into the body of our meeting, we have some special recognitions that I'm gonna ask Chief Stewart to come down and lead us in that. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. We have just completed our detention promotions for fiscal year fifteen, and Captain Carpenter has ran that through the promotional process. We have four individuals within our detention center that are up for promotion, and I'll tell you a little bit about them as they come down. Our first one is Sergeant Scott Walker. He's a graduate of Western Carolina University, and Scott worked with the city already twenty-five years till his retirement in 2013. He's been in the detention center since then and has also worked in investigations and detention previously. Our next person up for promotions, Corporal Dewey Bramlett. Dewey has been a detention officer with us since 2006, and his nine-year tenure, he served as a field training officer and has also been Officer of the Month. He's also a recipient of the Good Conduct Award and 2012 Community Service Award. I think Corporal Bramlett, you have some people here. You wanna recognize them?
Yes, my wife Dewey Bramlett, married twenty-eight years. My mom was dead, changed her mother Bramlett, took my parents for almost fifty years.
Okay, next officer up for promotions, Corporal Marshall Brock. He's been a law enforcement officer for twenty-six years, retired, came back with us in the detention center where he currently serves. He also serves as one of the city's farms instructors. Our last candidate up for promotion is Corporal Keely Callaway. She began her career in 1996 at the Rockdale Sheriff's Office. She's also worked in Walton County and Wilson County, Tennessee, and currently serves as our pre-coordinator for the jail. What that stands for is the Prison Rape Elimination Act, and I believe you have some family here tonight if you wanna recognize them. Okay. All right, if you guys would make your way right around here. Line up. You ready to run? Hi?
Scott Walker.
You're Brock.
Keely Callaway.
Repeat after me. On my honor, I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character or the public trust. I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions. I will always uphold the Constitution, my community, and the agency, sir. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Cole, please.
Thank you, Rachel.
Congratulations.
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 The minutes of our May eleventh meeting have been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Not hearing any, do I have a motion to approve? First by Dr. Thompson. Second by Mr. Harbin. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, the minutes of May eleventh passed unanimously. We get into our new business, we had our first item of, I'm sorry, old business was a request consideration of ordinance to rezone 1502 South McDuffie Street from R5 Single Family Residential to NC Neighborhood Commercial, and it's my understanding that the petitioner has asked to remove that request.
That is correct. We have a written request from the petitioner to remove that request. But I would like, if I could, Mr. Mayor, I would like to thank Councilman Stewart for arranging the public meeting at the extension campus. We had good attendance. I appreciate the report Maurice gave and Linda for being there, and also Councilman Roberts was there. Good turnout from the public and a good exchange of information about the process. So, thanks for...
Thank you. Our only other item of old business, request second and third reading of ordinance 15-06 to rezone 1301 Tribble Street and an adjacent lot from RM10 multifamily residential to LO Limited Office. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Mayor, again, you gave approval to this at your May eleventh meeting. The Planning Commission also recommended this unanimously. This is a slightly lower zoning than the one before, limited office, so does eliminate retail-based commercial businesses, and this would be a laundry map. So, we'd recommend this to you on second and third reading.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? First by Mr. John Roberts. Second by Mr. Matt Harbin. Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Pass this unanimously on the second reading.
I approve the third final reading.
First by Dr. Thompson. Second by Mr. Buck Roberts. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, it passes unanimously on the third and final reading. Thank you. We've got five items of new business, and the first item is request consideration of an ordinance to annex and zone 1212 Reed Road to R20 Single Family Residential. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Mayor and Council, you're probably familiar with this from the report that Maurice sent. Since we forgot, we had a Memorial Day meeting, there would not be a chance to refer it, and for that, we do apologize. We went ahead and had the meeting for the Planning Commission. This is 212 Reed Road. We'd like to annex that and zone it. It is part of Concord Baptist Church. They are the petitioner. The house has been demolished for quite some time. They would like to expand their parking lot, and again, they could have chosen to do this in the county, but it would have required both city and county reviewing their plans. So, they've requested to annex it to smooth that process, and we'd recommend that to you as well as the Planning Commission recommend it June the second.
Thank you. I think we got an email from Ms. McKenzie. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Curvin?
Looking at this diagram, the red line goes around the adjacent property. We're only talking about the blue striped portion?
The blue, yes. The red, the white piece was still out, and I believe that is part of the...
Yeah, the white is a gun department outside the city, that's why.
Yeah, normally if you looked at our map, Councilman Curvin, that inside that red line is out, so we're only annexing the hatch mark. Correct. Thank you.
Now, let me make sure I understand. The entire red box, we're not annexing it?
No, sir.
Are they gonna resub... They own that whole parcel that's in the red block, or is that correct?
No. It's a little bit confusing. If you looked at a big city map, anything inside the red is in the city. This is kinda the opposite. This whole piece was outside.
They can see Ms. Reed's house.
It is Ms. Reed's house. So, the church only owns the blue piece. So, what'll happen is that red line will go behind the blue piece, and that will be an island, her house, still there. That's correct.
Another small donut hole, huh?
Yes, sir.
Any other comments, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Accepted. Passed.
First by Mr. Chapman. Second by Mr. Buck Roberts. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, it passes unanimously. Our second item of new business, request consideration of an ordinance submitting a 2014-2015 budget. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to be brief since all the council members got a chance to see these budget amendments during the budget work sessions. In keeping with some requested changes, the staff recommends amendments to the budget each quarter as we do the quarterly financial reports, so they're done as you go through the year. Still not maybe ideal, but at least they're not all piled on the end. I'm not gonna go through all these 'cause Peggy did a nice job. She may have some comments. There are about five or six of these, amending various funds, and I think you can see everything from Carolina Renn Park to some paving to equipment for the police department and some HVA systems and dryers for the jail. So, unless you want me to go through those, we'd recommend those to you on first reading. Again, I think each of you's seen those, and they've been published for the public to review.
I have a question.
Mr. Curvin?
As I look at this list, the only one I see that has anything to do with the grant is on the Police Department Taser Grant, which is $21,000. Is that... Are there others that are grant monies also?
Um, not on this one. Some of the others, you did one earlier, I think, for the traffic enforcement grant, which was several hundred thousand.
Not on this list we're doing tonight. Okay, and then, of course, it says here that we've approved these things as expenditures, but not as an amendment to the budget, but previously.
Correct.
And I mean, most of this money that we're talking about is money that came out of the general fund balance to spend on certain items that came up. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. The last four are clearly out of the fund balance, something that was unexpected, like the generators, the HVA systems. Some of the earlier ones, like Renn Park and Creighton, like the Creighton, for example, was CTC funds that you received, they are in effect a grant, so...
Yeah, they didn't come out of the general fund all the way.
No, no, that one didn't. The only ones out of the general fund would be the bottom four.
Well, there's also the first one and the third one.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. They all do say general fund, but prior year funds. And firefighter settlement, excuse me.
First one and the third one, and the last four all came out of the fund balance.
Yep. I stand corrected. So, y'all, what you were asking to do is amend the budget to reflect expenditures that you've... You are, in some cases, city managers have...
We're gonna amend the budget that basically is over in about two weeks, two or three weeks, at the end of June. That budget year be up.
Yes, sir.
And then...
Mr. Chapman?
I know we go through this, it seems like every year, but the accountant recommends that these adjustments be made based on the accounting methods that are...
No. Not necessarily. I mean, you can have the original budget, then you can have an amended budget, and then the actual. That's probably the best recommendation for financial reporting.
But my understanding, when we met with the accountant, and we've met with him over periods of time, they recommend doing this. Do they not?
It's a good practice.
So, they say that's the one way you can do it, but they don't really recommend it one way or the other. So, truth of the matter is, we're rewriting history, so we'll have a perfect vision in hindsight.
Exactly.
With that, Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve this.
I certainly...
First one is Harbin.
Second.
Second by Dr. Thompson. Further discussion?
Is there any other way to do it, other than what, the way we do it?
It's not amended.
And then, what would happen is, at the end of the year, you have, your figures would be higher or lower than the budget, but the budget's only a projection anyway, so that's okay, but that's why I'm gonna vote against it.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? That passes eight and one with Mr. Curvin to sit.
One of these days, y'all gonna realize what I'm saying.
Money's still there regardless.
Well, you know, makes a valid point. It's either over or under. We choose, we've done this for you.
There's no wrong answer.
It is, no wrong answer. The next item of new business is request consideration of an ordinance adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2015-2016. Mr. Moore?
Oh, here we go. Thank you. We did conduct three budget sessions, work sessions at lunch for the various council members. Peggy and her staff also had a five o'clock public hearing today to disclose this to the public, was advertised according to state law and local paper. So, really, what I'd like to do is just really thank the Finance Division, Peggy and her staff for putting this together, and for each of you for attending the budget work sessions to let us preview this. Mayor, other than that, really, as we talked about, what will be happening in the city on June 30th, when the current fiscal year ends and you move to July 1st to start a new fiscal year, pretty much the level of service and everything that you'll be doing will be the same. The biggest change you have is implementing the 15% sewer rate increase, which will allow you to fully comply with the EPA and the CMOM program, and just for the general public, while sometimes it's distasteful to raise rates or taxes and those kind of things, this will be a good move. We'll ensure the infrastructure, your sewer system is here for many, many years to come, and I know each of you know it, but I'd like to say it one more time. There probably are no more, other than our people that work in industry, having access to water and sewer, especially from your standpoint, are no better economic development and recruiting tools. So, with that, unless you have some questions, again, folks from the public have had a chance to look at it during the public hearing, we'd recommend the budget be adopted on first reading.
Did anyone show up at public hearing?
Art and Councilman Roberts.
Maybe we could just wait till next June to adopt, because then we wouldn't have to amend it.
Any other questions?
Let me think on that one.
I moved the adoption of this budget on the first reading.
First by Dr. Thompson. Second by Mr. Harbin. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Pass this unanimously.
Well, now, see...
On the first reading.
You didn't vote against the budget.
No, I voted for it.
We'll pick up on the second and third reading at the next meeting. Item number four, request consideration to purchase four vehicles for the police department. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Stewart, Captain Ament, and Captain Carpenter here. I would like to thank them for their research and work to try to find a vehicle. I know this is a little bit different than the standard patrol car, but certainly a vehicle in the case of our Special Operations Division, which includes narcotics and some other areas that will be useful for us. They can come forward if you have any questions, but these are Ford Explorer SUVs. They'll be unmarked. They'll operate in the narcotics division, and they are being funded, and this will probably have to be amendment to the budget sooner or later, by funds from a federal case that our officers help make. We share in the revenues for confiscated cash, properties that are seized and stolen, and so we'd recommend you buy these at the state contract price, and that's from Dick Bailey Ford. The total is $100,620.
Thanks, sir.
And they'll come up. You may have some questions of how they intend to use those. We'd gladly...
They're already here. Chief? Any questions for Chief? Captain? Mr. Stewart?
I know Chief and I was speaking before the meeting, but just curious, it's my understanding that these grants, with these funds are coming from drug seizure money and that type of thing, and they don't want you to hold on to the money for a long period of time. You know, they want you to spend the money. It's not like a savings account, as you had mentioned, but I guess two things that comes to mind is, one, I know animal control is a very big issue here in Anderson, especially in the city limits, and I noticed that animal control is part of the SOD Division, and the truck that we have is pretty ancient. You know, it's an old truck, and you know, you look at the county's animal control, typical first-class animal control. Just curious, why wasn't the animal control included into that grant? Because I know this money can be used for anything. It doesn't necessarily have to be used for vehicles, but one, looking at the replacement of that vehicle, and then, two, in light of everything that's going on across the country, why couldn't we use some of this money? It seemed like to me it'd be a better use to maybe get body cameras for all the officers, and you know, if we've still got vehicles that are... Because I know we still need a lot of body cameras, and maybe that could be utilized.
Answer your questions. The first one, in your vehicle replacement plan, this past year, Council, I appreciate, purchased five Dodge Chargers for us. At the time, we were looking at getting six, but we cut it to five just to make sure that each division and the city got their fair share. If there was money left over then this year, then we would be able to purchase another one. Our Public Works Director, Kerry Stoner, called me about two weeks ago, and there was money left over, so the animal control truck is ordered. It's on its way out of that money that was left. So, that was the reason we didn't include it with this. I know as a necessity, this year, we were replacing the detention van. That's about a 1997, and the animal control trucks, about 2002, so they are both being replaced. Regarding the body cameras, we are in function with that right now. There are some that are gonna need some upgrades, and there will always be some that are damaged and will have to replace, but we are good right now on those. We probably need to, we'll need to purchase some throughout the year, just so that we always have adequate stock, so when an officer's camera goes down, we're able to issue a replacement camera right then.
Does all the officers have body cameras? Every officer we have, are they issued a body camera?
The uniformed officers of sergeant rank and below, yes, sir, all wear body cameras.
What's your philosophy on that, Chief? I know statewide, they were saying that every officer within every police department needs a body camera. Do you think that's necessary?
Well, your lieutenants and upward, or they're considered part of the administration. Lieutenant surely does go out on scene sometimes, it's a major crime. They're out there, they're the people in command, and that's basically their function. Lieutenants are not out there really making the cases. They're more supervising, making sure our officers are doing things the right way and following policy, following procedure, and making sure the law is correct in what we're doing. Thank you.
Mr. Curvin?
Chief, let me ask you this. According to this information we were given, there are currently 15 vehicles in the Special Operations Division. You're asking us to buy four vehicles. Are those gonna be, are they gonna replace certain of the 15 existing vehicles? And if they are, what happens to those vehicles?
We have plans to deadline those vehicles that are coming out. The vehicles that are still in, you know, fairly good, decent shape, they will be passed down to a lower rank, so as we're replacing like a lieutenant's vehicle or a captain's, they would be knocked down to the next person. We do have some vehicles that we have seized that we've used as what we call cold cars in narcotics, and those vehicles will be deadlined. We've had some vehicles in narcotics that have had major transmission issues that have been in the shop for about three times.
I guess what I'm getting at is, you got 15 vehicles now, and if we buy four more, you gonna have 19 vehicles?
No, sir. We will deadline four of those.
We'll stay back at 15. And actually, Councilman Curvin, we're looking at two options on those. We'll either put them on GovDeals.com and sell them, or we're also looking at a trade that will lower this cost. Because some of the vehicles he mentioned, we have really about, was it five or six coming off? We have some that were seized that aren't normal, they used, and we have a BMW, and a couple of other things that need to be deadlined as well. So, we're trying to package up either to auction then or to use them as a trade, whichever is most valuable to the city.
Well, I thought I just heard him say that we were gonna pass those vehicles down to the next rank and file. We wouldn't just go auction them off or trade them, and if they're still good, we're gonna pass them down, so we still got, you're not doing away with the vehicle, you're just gonna keep it and pass it to another department.
At the bottom, we all, unless we tell you otherwise, it's an addition to the fleet. Then, if we're buying four, at least four come off. And what he's saying is, the four that will move down, I think you asked me about this earlier, they'll probably, in this case, stay in the police division, because they're a little more police-related, but they would have options to go to Public Works, but in the end, we'll either trade four vehicles, or we'll auction four that get deadlined. He's saying, there's actually a couple more that can't be used because they're basically vehicles that were seized in drug deals that we used for a period of time to make other drug cases undercover, and they've been... We're trying to package up to get the most revenue, either through auction or trade, of what we're taking off.
Mr. Chapman?
I just want to commend our department in their involvement with this case, and I can see no better way to use the criminals' money than to buy more police cars. So, with that, I ask for approval, for general approval.
First by Mr. Chapman. Second by Mr. John Roberts. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Pass this unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
The last item of new business is request consideration of a resolution in opposition to H3490, which is House Bill Regarding Business License Fees. Mr. Moore?
I'll try to be brief, and the mayor, as the president of Municipal Association, may want to comment on this further, but the bottom line, most of you familiar with the Quinn Bill, which was intended to cap business license at $100 for all businesses. We've tried to, through the Municipal Association, educate our legislators in Columbia how important revenue source this is to municipalities. We've tried to describe, despite a lot of rumors, how it actually works, is a percentage of gross income. It is based on the classifications of businesses, based on their profitability, so while it's not truly an income tax, it is similar in nature to how it's done. But the biggest thing is, if this bill passes in its present form, it certainly has a devastating impact on the state. I want you to know what it has on you and this organization here, and how it could impact police and fire and other sanitation services. Right now, and you just, the budget you just passed, business license represent 29%, or $7.8 million of your $24 million general fund. If you had $100 cap, then that would amount to a $3.2 million reduction with, in our opinion, based on Act 388, which limits your millage. No way to recover that in another form of revenue, and I'm not gonna say that you could not. It would be a major reduction of services for the municipality. So, really, the Municipal Association and their legislative committee have asked that all cities pass this resolution, so it be passed on to our legislators, and Mayor, you may want to add to that. We recommend you approve it.
I don't have a whole lot more to add than just to say that... I don't have a whole lot more to add than, just to say that we, we have, as an organization, met with Representative Quinn and, and kind of looked at some of the actuarial, had some accountants in and some economists in, to just try to see if we can somewhat reach a compromise. But like John said, a lot of it is the education fact of it, too. So, it did not go through, have any traction in regards to this first one or two-year sessions within the state, but it, it will probably come back up next session in January. So, we still need to be somewhat vigilant on, on trying to make sure that, that we protect this revenue source.
And it, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
When you talk to, you know, Mr. Quinn, I mean, was that the only subject y'all discussed? I mean, it makes no sense to me why the state government would try to govern locally. I mean, they need to worry about our roads, our bridges, our state issues.
I agree. I mean, in, in, there are a lot of issues out there that they, they definitely need to tackle, and I think all of them come before this, for sure. Anything else? Great.
Need to have a motion?
Yep, we do need a motion.
I think motion will approve this.
Second.
First by Mr. Harbin. Second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Administrative briefing?
Uh, we only have the calendar, but y'all may, before we have a special guest, Diane Lee with us. Diane, why don't you come out the front? She's gonna thank you in just a minute. Uh, but let me, that, and part of what she's gonna thank you about is on the calendar, so that's why we'll ask her to make her way down. She has another meeting at seven. I wasn't sure that we could get to her, but y'all were very efficient tonight. Uh, if you look at your calendar that you've been presented, we'll look, tomorrow night is Sounds in the Park, from 6:30 to 8:30 at Carolina Renn Park. That's the city's version of some, of different musical events that we have there. Also, Thursday, some of you have signed up. If you haven't, you can talk to Rachel for the Chamber Small Business Awards luncheon at Tucker's. And then, if you look at next week, and we're almost to Diane, we have movie night on Tuesday night, nine o'clock. And then, Diane Lee wanted to thank you for your sponsorship of Shakespeare in the Park, which will be in Carolina Renn Park, starts on the 19th, runs the 19th, 20th, and 21st. Am I right on that, Diane? I'll let you go.
And 22nd.
And 22nd.
Well, thank you all. Through your accommodations tax grant, you approved a budget for our first ever Shakespeare in the Park, and I was really excited to, to see this happen. Ruth Ann Terry, who's our projects manager, approached me and asked if I'd like to work with this. And having been in, in Greenville for about eight years, I know that this is a wonderful thing to bring, to bring to a city. And I have, there's, there's a buzz going on right now all over, all over town that, that we're doing this, that Dave Larson, who is the Dean of the Arts at Anderson University, is the director. We have about 25 young people and a few older people, more mature actors like that, that are, that are going to be in the park, and it's free to the public, and they can bring a picnic, or they can go downtown out to eat, and it starts at 7:30. We have four performances, and I have free tickets for each of you for this free event. So, so please help us pass the word, if you will. Thank you so much.
We'll pass those out just shortly. Also, this weekend, it's a really very busy weekend, is the Father's Day Car Show downtown, 10 to 4 on Saturday. And then, if you look on out further- Can I say, this week, well, that week, I meant the week of the Shakespeare Park, sorry. Got a lot of going on in June. And then, of course, the block party continues on Thursday nights, and you'll have one more council meeting this month before the end of fiscal year. Mr. Mayor, that's all we have in administrative briefing, and we do have one item in executive session. That would be to discuss a development agreement for Homes of Hope.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to go to executive session.
Go move.
First by Mr. Buck Roberts.
Second.
Second by Mr. Don Chapman. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion come out of executive session. First by Mr. Buck Roberts.
Second.
Second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? In executive session, the council heard a management report in regards to the development agreement with Homes of Hope. There will be no action taken at this time. We would anticipate that this item would appear on our agenda for our next council meeting. I would entertain a motion to close our meeting. First by Dr. Thompson. Second by Mr. Harbin. All those in favor say aye. Opposed?